The regular session of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz? Here. White?
Here.
Joka?
Here. We will not have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'll entertain a motion to recede the agenda as per.
Second?
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Public comments. Are there any members? Are there any? Is there anyone in the boardroom who would like to provide public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide public comment? Item number three, claims and payments, Mr. Perry.
This week's expenditures total one million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, thirty-two dollars and sixty cents, of which forty-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars is the sheriff's office maintenance off, or maintenance department, twenty-three thousand, five twenty-three. Conservation, twenty-seven thousand, two ninety-four. And engineer and secondary roads, eight hundred and seven thousand, three oh seven. Everything looked normal.
I will make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed. Second? Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. White?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes.
Item number four is project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Just very briefly this morning, last Friday, Governor Reynolds issued the annual harvest disaster emergency proclamation, which was effective on Friday immediately. The proclamation allows vehicles transporting corn, soybeans, hay, straw, silage, and stover to be overweight, not to exceed ninety thousand pounds. All posted bridge loadings must be obeyed, of course. And it will be effective from September seventeenth until October seventeenth. So I would ask that the public slow down and give these large agricultural vehicles extra room, extra time out on the roads. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom? Anyone on Zoom or on the phone that would like to provide an update from departments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments from September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second?
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say no. The consent agenda.
Second?
Second?
All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oh, sorry. Grant?
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes.
Item number seven is contracts and agreements. It's a resolution that the proposal receives from TerraCon Cedar Falls, Iowa, for industrial hygiene consulting services for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, with the cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Be awarded and authorized the county engineer, Catherine Nicholas, to sign the proposal. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Kathy?
Yeah, in our, excuse me, in our continuing effort to increase safety in our, in our secondary road shops in particular, we have a need to analyze our exposures during welding and during activities that involve silica fume. We do not have this experience in-house to do these types of monitoring and measuring, so we need to hire an industrial hygiene consultant. There are two in local to Iowa, two here in Waterloo, actually, who have offices here in Iowa. We solicited comments, proposals from them. They did give us a list of their services and their costs. We would like to, I would propose that we be allowed to spend up to ten thousand dollars to hire TerraCon consultants in Cedar Falls to do some of these services for us and get us some answers on how we will respond to the exposure during welding in particular.
All right, any? Yes?
I was just gonna say, Kathy, do we know how approximately how long that takes before they come in and do that and have a result?
We're hopeful that they should be able to come in in the next week or so. We have welding going out on Quarry Road right now, which would be very helpful to get those exposures measured by the bridge crew. And then, of course, I mentioned the stainless steel welding that needs to be done in the next probable month.
Any other questions for Kathy? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes.
Item eight A is motion to decline to transfer county's interest in property addressed at twenty-six oh two Union Road and to authorize the chair to sign a letter communicating the same to attorney Eric Johnson. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All who's opposed, say no. Item eight B is a resolution that the suspension requested by Angela Talaska on taxes owed for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two installments in the amount of nine hundred and twenty dollars for parcel number eight, seven, one, two, dash, two, five, dash, four, six, one, dash, zero, zero, five, be approved pursuant to subsection four, twenty-seven point eight of the Code of Iowa and the county treasurer be authorized and directed to adjust her records accordingly.
Is that moved?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes.
Item number nine C is discussion regard to the expanded use of ATVs and UTVs in Black Hawk County. Kathy?
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I guess I will start out with this discussion due to some emails received in the past year or so, some emails to the county engineer, to the Board of Supervisors, probably to the sheriff. And just due to some of the other counties who have expanded their ordinances, I felt that this was a discussion we should have here amongst ourselves, amongst the other department heads here at Black Hawk County. I just have a few slides that give a very brief background of what the history here is in Iowa. Next slide, thank you, Kim. Just a few slides on what the Code of Iowa actually says about the allowance of ATVs on highways here in Iowa. So historically, the code three twenty-one point two-three-four A contains the general provision that they shall not be operated on a state highway. ATVs shall not be operated on a state highway unless one or more of the conditions apply. And we're all very familiar with the exclusion that gives farmers, people who live out in the county, if you're using these implements, ATVs or UTVs for implements of husbandry, you are allowed, you have been allowed to do that for a number of years here in Iowa. There's a few other incidental uses. You can use them for surveying out in the county, out on the roads. For example, if a political subdivision needs to use them for construction or maintenance items, we can use them for ourselves out in our county dishes, for example. And then emergency services, of course. And then there's some other allowances such as mowing and trail maintenance. But it's been pretty specific here in Iowa. Next slide, Kim. There are two other, a few other places where it is mentioned in Iowa code. And three twenty-one I states that county supervisors do have some authority to designate a use and a time for, to allow the expansion of these vehicles. And we've seen this happen here across Iowa at least the last fifteen years. Very, much more so, I believe, in the last five to seven years. We've seen a lot of counties have started to expand the ordinances. Next slide, Kim. And last year, a survey of the county engineers association, I can't speak on behalf of the other affiliates, such as the recorders and the sheriffs, but I know on the engineers, we did a survey. And at least about forty to fifty percent of all counties, according to the engineers, had adopted and expanded use, allowing for ATVs on some portion of the county road system. Nearly all of them just gave that exclusion to usage on a gravel road system. There were a few that mentioned that they could be allowed on the paved road system, but the ATV, UTV needed to stay off on the shoulder in particular. Nearly all of them restricted usage to thirty-five miles an hour. And then there, of course, is other language about registration and how you go about registering them with your county. In response to this, next slide, Kim. We put together here a team at the county composed of the sheriff, health department recorder, conservation attorney, myself. We met once, we gathered some research from, like I told you, from other counties, all the cities here in Black Hawk County, numerous other larger counties. We looked at information from Dubuque County in particular. They, there are another large county who has recently gone through an extensive public, held several public meetings before they passed their ordinance, I believe, in twenty, twenty-twenty. So we looked at this information and we met and we discussed, we shared our perspectives on it. And I thought we could, if any of us who were in the meeting would also like to share that this morning, that we would take the time to do that. Anyone want to speak or?
Well, I'll just mention, I was part of the committee and Mike Train, an assistant county attorney. In my perspective, the important thing would be if we were going to have such an ordinance, we'd have to be careful how we worded it. Several of the county ordinances that we looked at were not worded well. They, they actually contradicted, they actually said the opposite of what they wanted to do in some cases. I think judges will probably read them correctly or read them as intended. But nevertheless, some of them appeared to have been put together haphazardly. But I do think that I, I'll share the impression of the entirety of the people who are present at that committee meeting that we didn't see, number one, evidence of a lot of public desire for this ordinance. Number two, we did not see a benefit to the county, but rather saw a number of detriments to the county if such an ordinance was passed. I'm sure that some of the others will get into their perspectives, including Kathy as engineer and probably conservation as well.
Mike?
Sure, good morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director of County Conservation. And, you know, my participation in the committee really did revolve around vandalism concerns, damaged short park systems and different things like that. Now, right away, am I saying that everybody that's gonna drive one of these ATVs is going to, you know, tear through our forested areas and our prairies? No, I certainly am not. But the issue that we deal with right, we're already dealing with these issues now. They're not supposed to be ridden on these county roads. It would be tough to find one of our public hunting areas that doesn't have a trail ripped through the middle of it because this activity is going on already. And, you know, the other thing that comes up is, well, why don't you catch them? Well, you know, that's a little easier said than done. Those things can escape quite easily through, through the path that they came in on and we don't have the ability to get through there with our pickups and things like that. Would we love to get ahold of some of them? Yes, we would. So our point here is, we're seeing it already. Would, would an ordinance in Black Hawk County, which would allow them to travel the gravel roads, and I'll stop there because I think what Sheriff Thompson's gonna tell us is, according to what we found out in the, in the committee anyway, was simply the fact that they wouldn't condone usage on hard surface roads. So we're gonna be talking about gravel roads. You know, we're gonna find out, I think, that that's just opening up a highway to that nine thousand acres that we're entrusted with managing. And, and again, we do the best we can to make those places aesthetically nice for whether you're a hunter, whether you're walking, whether you're trying to bike through those things, whatever. Again, what's already happened is ugly. And, and I wish there was a way that we could stop that. We restrict those, those ATVs and UTVs both within our park systems and our public hunting systems. I would see any type of ordinance that we might develop here in the future, I would, I would probably be asking our board to go ahead and keep those restrictions in place for our park systems because common sense just doesn't say that it's going to work within those park systems. And so, again, to not beat a dead horse here, that's really our main concern. And, and I certainly understand the fact that these ATVs and UTVs, they have a tremendous amount of uses. And you look at, at states that have, like Wisconsin and Minnesota, they have thousands of miles of the neatest trails and the neatest systems. And again, if I had the opportunity to travel to those places or lived in those areas, I would have one too because that's great. But the problem we run into in places like Black Hawk County or any county in the state of Iowa is when we go ahead and release these things or we develop an ordinance and then we really don't have the facilities for them to do what they want to do, then it spills over into areas that they shouldn't be. And that's what we're experiencing already. So if we had those beautiful trails like they have in Wisconsin and Minnesota, if we had those things, I'd probably be standing here going, I think this is a great recreational opportunity that we could work on. But, but we just simply don't. And, and so that's really our biggest concern. And again, people that own these things, they're great people, they really are. And they use them in the right way for the most part. But again, it's back to that one percent. And I'd hate to see that one percent get any larger than it already is because it is a struggle for us. So, any questions? I can answer it all.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff? So let me give you a little bit of a climate on how we address this currently. Obviously, with implements of husbandry or agricultural use, we don't go out of our way to pick on farmers. And the difficulty is, as you see them going down the road, how do we know whether they're joyriding out, tooling around, checking their crops? Or are they visiting the neighbor? Who knows? So nine times out of ten, unless they're out doing damage, being reckless, we don't engage them because we don't want to be seen as those folks that are out there picking on farmers to begin with. If they're out in the rural areas, that's normally who's operating them anyway. Two weeks ago, Kathy's team contacted us to go pursue people that were tearing up gravel roads. And we made contact with four or five different homesteads down there that just basically explained to them that this is not acceptable behavior. But I do agree with Mike and his assertion that by opening it up, you're probably going to have more of that kind of activity occurring. I have ATVs, UTVs, we go riding up in Wisconsin. And so I recognize the value and the enjoyment of that. I also recognize that there is limited financial or productive benefit to Black Hawk County because we simply don't have the infrastructure in the rural area to support or to have these kinds of riders support anything in Black Hawk County for that purpose other than perhaps as a connector county to those places where organized rides and other infrastructure exists for them to be able to go and participate and use. So really, we are down to what is the purpose of us allowing these kinds of activities to occur? Is it to allow the neighbor to go down and be more neighborly? Maybe there is an advantage to that. Maybe encouraging neighbors to get to know neighbors, maybe that is something you want to contemplate. But if it's just simply going out and joyriding at thirty-five miles an hour when bigger traffic is out there going to be going fifty-five or faster, certainly there are safety concerns for you to contemplate on that. At the end of the day, from an enforcement perspective, we won't be doing much more with regard to this, whether you passed an ordinance or didn't, unless there were bad things occurring, like they're jumping ditches and creating hazards and causing damage. And so for those that want to do it right and certainly see this as an opportunity for them to be able to do it right, it's unfortunate. For those that are out there doing it wrong, we stand ready and make attempts to detect that kind of activity already. So I don't know that this is much for us, other than for me to say, you know, we leave it to you and your best judgment as to whether or not there is an advantage to Black Hawk County for this kind of activity. We certainly would encourage you to think long and hard about it because I think there are folks out there that are interested in it. Obviously, we get contacted about it. So I'm not gonna stand in the way and say absolutely no way. Because again, I recognize for those fine upstanding folks that want to be able to do something like that, I don't have an issue with it. But for those that would do wrong, we're already in a position to be able to react and respond to it. So for us, it's much to do about nothing by way of a county ordinance. We wouldn't do much different than we're already doing. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Any others? Kathy?
Yeah, Sandy Smith was on our team and she's out for the week, so she didn't have any. She, her main concern, of course, was that occasionally people come to the counter and ask, ask the recorder's office, what can they, what can they do with these ATVs? Now, now we have these registered, what can we do with them? Where can we take them? So she, if we were to expand the ordinance, she was hopeful that there could be, you know, guidance given to folks on, that they could hand out. But they don't, they don't really see any change. They'll continue to.
I hope she refers them to the Waterloo Recreational Park where they can be ridden.
That's a good point. And then just from my perspective, as the county engineer, of course, my main focus is on increasing railroad safety. That's my mission here in the county. And in my mind, ATVs, UTVs and railroad safety, they're not, they're not compatible. ATVs, UTVs, they have not been crash tested in any way. They are designed to be operated on, on a rough surface. They should not be operated on, on a paved road at all. They're not designed for that. And the manufacturers tell, tell us, tell everyone, tell buyers, tell the public that they should not be operated on smooth roads. So in the long run, for me, it's just that they're not, they're not a safe vehicle to be operating on our county road system. However, if you do wish to pass an ordinance, I would favor that there would be some type of sunset clause so that we could evaluate this, evaluate it at the end of twenty-four months in particular, or for example, twenty-four months, so that we'd be allowed to assess how it's, how it's working.
And I know there's concerns with them being operated on paved roads, but there are many routes in Wisconsin. I mean, the one that surprises me in Wisconsin, Dells, within the city limits themselves, they are allowed. And, you know, what I appreciate is, I wish the conclusion would have been different, but I appreciate the vetting process that went through and I respect that.
I have two more slides.
All right.
So just pretty much as Mike said, already summarized, that we didn't really, the committee didn't really see a significant desire to have ATV usage on county roads. And again, this is just from Black Hawk County perspective. The allowance might be that they could only be allowed on unpaved surfaces. Next slide, Kim. And we, most of us felt that there would not be perceived economic benefit for allowing these in Black Hawk County on the gravel road system. There's just really nowhere to go on the gravel road system. We've told you, Mike's talked to you about some of the, the economic consequences of possibly allowing them into the park system. So we saw that as more of a negative. And that the minimal registration fees, I think Sandy said they're seventeen dollars a year, that those would not pay to offset the costs to do any type of repairs in the park system, for example. So unless anyone has any further to comment, that's pretty much what our team discussed and found out and recommended.
Any comments from the board?
I will just follow up with a couple of things I was gonna say, just because I was able to attend that and it was a very good meeting and I thought everything was discussed quite thoroughly, which was a little bit different than what I'd ever thought before. And so I thought it helped me have a better understanding. But I know Mike kind of touched on some of the things at that meeting that we would need to decide as board supervisors. And it would be which roads would be allowed, which, what the speeds would be. Kathy talked about signage and we talked about equipment on vehicles, that type of thing. So those types of considerations would be something that we'd have to spend a great deal of time on to, before we actually did something like this. But like I said, I also wanted to just comment on this. Back last year, because we typically get probably one or two of these at least a year in our office. And last year, I know we had had a gentleman that inquired about it. And I had followed up with Chris Faraday because we'd heard from the sheriff and we'd heard from the engineer's office, just asked him as far as an insurance, our insurance provider and risk manager about it. And then when this came up again, I had asked him if he'd had any change of opinion. And his thought was, he sent an email to me and I said, I certainly be happy to send it to the board again and share that information, but with anyone. But his primary points in that were that ATV manufacturers say the vehicles are designed only for off-road use. And then he went on to talk about, you know, high center of gravity and the wheels and a little bit of everything else. But that the second, the biggest issue for him is speed. And also, the third point was that there will be an extra charge under general liability if a county member does allow ATVs. And he said he couldn't give us an idea of the cost on that yet until he knew what kind of an ordinance we were proposing. But there would be additional cost to the county just for that alone. So that's something I wanted to share with the board as well.
All right, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, let's move on to item number nine, the discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-nineteen.
Good morning, Board. Dr. Bonier, Black Hawk County Public Health.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just a brief update. I mean, we're still seeing cases over the weekend. We had a hundred and new cases. The highest age group so far is about the nineteen to twenty-four-year-old. So again, continue to ask the young adult population to get vaccinated. And we're gonna up our campaign for vaccinations as much as we can since we're getting closer and closer to the flu season and all the other respiratory illnesses. Right now, we have about sixty-five percent of our county vaccinated, eighteen and older. Any questions from me?
You said a hundred new? I was gonna, you spoke softly, you said last week there was a hundred.
A hundred and eight cases.
Hundred and eight, thank you.
Yep.
That was just over the weekend.
Yep, that was over the weekend, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other more, any questions for Dr. Bonier? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, any reports or information from the board?
Just to let everyone know, tomorrow is our twenty-sixth Honor Flight. It'll be leaving at six-thirty tomorrow morning and returning in about nine-thirty. This will be, there's ninety-one vets on, gonna be on the plane. And over the last ten years of raising money, we've raised over two-point-six million dollars for Honor Flight. So we continue to move on, looking at more flights for next year after tomorrow's. You're welcome at the airport tomorrow to welcome them home too. That's a nice event for the veterans that never got thanked for their service.
What time? Do they come in?
Nine-thirty.
Tom, do you have anything?
Nope, I'm fine.
Chris, Linda?
No. Thank the committee, I guess, for the work on that. It was.
Yeah.
It was educational for me, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for making, yeah. That's how the process is supposed to work. Mental health is always a significant challenge for many communities, especially with the pandemic. It was seven years and two days ago that a Waterloo officer committed suicide. And many tributes were being created on Facebook. He was a friend to many, he was a wise man, and his actions simply shocked. He was a friend to many, he was a wise man, and his actions simply shocked that agency. As a matter of fact, it's still reeling from the effects of that event today. So I just want to say, those that are considering taking that path, reach out to somebody, call somebody, even if it's a friend, if it's a pastor, or whatever, a counselor, but there's always hope. Things can always get better, and if you feel like you're struggling alone and you feel that's your only option, there are people that are willing to help you. I don't know how many suicides I've been to, I didn't keep track of them, but I always had, when I would go to them, I always wondered, what was the, what brought this person here? I mean, Sturgeon Bay, it was a tourist destination, we'd have people come there just to commit suicide. And I always wondered, I would, what was the last thing they saw before their life ended? And how did they get to such a point in life where they felt that this is the only option to end their life? So I'm just imploring, if you're struggling, just reach out. All right, onto the canvas.
I just got two packets. It was just the one precinct in the absentee. So if you guys just want to take a look at the absentee, they're just gonna be, this is from election, and this is from, election results. Peter Spears comparing that to the, they match.
14, right? 14, yeah. Where we saw it.
Oh, this, oh, okay.
This was an easy one.
Treacherous, treacherous. We get a sign? Karen? Okay.
Okay. Now, let's, let's see. Ballot's cast, is that what we want, or registered voters, let she start with the number for you?
I was looking, I was just looking at the, the yes and no votes, yeah.
Pay 430, yes, 27, no.
Yep.
Okay. I don't know if we can do this. Make the next one quite so easy, wouldn't it? Yeah. Oh, they did.
We'll wait till November, there'll be a few.
Yeah. This one, oh, yeah. Always gotta have that. Sure, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There were no provisional ballots that were received and not counted.
Okay.
Good job, Grant.
Yeah, thank you.
They could all be so easy. And they're only gonna get worse.
Oh, sure.
It's two? Oh, okay. Oh, you sure can?
Motion to adjourn? I'm sure.
I'll make a motion to certify the outcome of the votes cast in special action for the city of Hudson. Hudson.
Second.
Held Tuesday, September 14th, in accordance with Iowa Code subsection 50.24. We have a second. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little? Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes. Mr. White made a motion to adjourn, I seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.